Council President, Council Members and Participants, we are now live.
Thank you very much, and good morning to everyone. We're gonna get started. I understand that the state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session. Due to the current public health emergency, City Council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting. Notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and the Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on PHLCouncil.com. I now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call a roll to take attendance, and members that are in attendance will please indicate that you are present or anything that you may so wish to activate your screen. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in the city of Philadelphia.
Morning.
Morning, Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues and everyone else. Have a great day.
Morning.
Councilwoman Dobb?
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and residents of the city.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gattie A?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia. Present.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilman Green?
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gim?
I think Councilwoman Gim will be coming in in about an hour.
Councilman Heenan?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Just calling for justice for all the young people who lost their lives to senseless gun violence.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
That are in attendance will please indicate that you are present or anything that you may so wish to activate your screen. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in the city of Philadelphia.
Morning.
Morning, Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues and everyone else. Have a great day.
Morning.
Councilwoman Dobb?
Morning, Council President, colleagues, and residents of the city.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gattie A?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia. Present.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilman Green?
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gim?
I think Councilwoman Gim will be coming in in about an hour.
Councilman Heenan?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Just calling for justice for all the young people who lost their lives to senseless gun violence.
Morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in the city of Philadelphia.
Morning.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sánchez?
Good morning, Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Councilman Scola?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. Present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Happy Thursday.
Council President Clark?
Good morning, everyone. We've established a quorum, and we will now come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Garth Giddings of Cavalry Baptist Church. He's here today as the guest of Councilman Jones. I would ask all members and guests to please bow our heads with the invocation. Pastor Garth?
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman Jones, my councilman, and the rest of the council. God bless you this morning. Let us pray. Father, we pray for the members of this august body. We pray for their spouses, for their children, for their grandchildren, for their loved ones. We pray for protection, that you keep them safe. We pray for success in their endeavors.
Pastor, are you still with us? Medesto?
It looks like the pastor's connection is frozen.
Broken? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Amen.
Councilman Jones?
Just say amen.
Amen. Amen. Much-needed invocation. Thank you, Pastor Giddings, for those inspiring words, although they're abbreviated. We truly feel the Spirit. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 11, 2021, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 11, 2021, be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 11, 2021. Stand approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. The Journal is approved. Thank you. Our next order of business is the question. Relieve the absence. And the Chair recognizes...
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of the Capitol, no questions, leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. And our next order of business is communications, and I will ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president, to members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on March 17, 2021, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on March 4, 2021. Bill number 210082. And then on March 17, 2021, I signed the following bill which was passed by council at its session on March 11, 2021. Bill number 200618. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Polyproperty on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a lease agreement with St. Agnes MLB for use by the city of a portion of the premises located at 1930 South Broad Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Water Commissioner to enter into an agreement between the city and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the PRA to act as the city's agent to include and incorporate Philadelphia Water Department-identified green stormwater infrastructure projects in certain construction and improvement projects in and around the city on properties owned by the city, the city projects, including those projects arising out of the city's rebuilding community infrastructure, or REBUILD program, and on properties owned by the PRA, PRA projects, the city projects and PRA projects together, the construction projects, from the design phase to construction completion in an efficient manner, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and I just want to say by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privilege resolution, be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide an appropriate opportunity for public comment. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. So, Mr. Decker, would you please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers on behalf of Council President Clark a resolution also naming the 1600 block of West York Street from North 16th Street to North 17th Street as Margaret Wells Way.
Next week's calendar?
On her own behalf, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers a resolution honoring the 49th Vice President of the United States, Kamala Harris, for her distinguished career and accomplishments on the occasion of Women's History Month.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gim offers a resolution recognizing the week of March 21 through March 27, 2021, as National Safe Place Week in the city of Philadelphia, and calling for a citywide effort to create havens for young people from physical and emotional abuse, neglect, violence, and trauma through mentoring, counseling, and community supports.
Next week's calendar? Excuse me?
We have to pause for a moment. Council President, we lost the channel 64.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And, Mr. Decker, can you pick back up on Councilwoman Gim's resolution? I'm not sure that was called.
Councilwoman Gim offers one resolution recognizing the week of March 21 through March 27, 2021, as National Safe Place Week in the city of Philadelphia, and calling for a citywide effort to create havens for young people from physical and emotional abuse, neglect, violence, and trauma through mentoring, counseling, and community supports.
Thank you. Next week's calendar?
Councilman Jones offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring the Defender Association of Philadelphia for their tireless pursuit of justice for our indigent population, and designated the May of March 18, 2021, as Public Defense Day in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Mr. President, the gentleman from the 4th District would like to be recognized for our request on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Michael Decker. I'd like to call on a rule suspension as to allow this resolution to be voted upon today because today is Defenders' Day National.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor of motion to suspend the rules for our reading on today's calendar?
Aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. That will be on today's calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, sorry.
Councilman Jones offers a resolution supporting the Live and Let Live campaign for the city of Philadelphia to coordinate, engage, and promote activities to help eradicate the culture of gun violence.
That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Section 14502 entitled CTR Center-City Overlay District by establishing and adding a new subarea within the Broad Street area entitled South Broad Street Gateway and making related changes.
For the committee?
Councilwoman Kinnon Sánchez offers on behalf of Council President Clark an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the General Fund to council to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions for the purpose of further implementing council's new normal jobs initiative and adjusting council's internal appropriations.
For the committee?
Councilwoman Kinnon Sánchez offers on her own behalf a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to consider the equitable allocation of resources for the school district of Philadelphia under the American Rescue Plan.
Today's calendar?
Councilwoman Brooks offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution honoring the advocacy of Bill Krebs and affirming the rights of all people with disabilities.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Camia Awet Ayewa and Rashida Phillips for their cultural and artistic contributions to Philadelphia and for winning the 2021 Collide Residency Award from Arts at Kern on behalf of their collective Black Quantum Futurism.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Thomas offers a resolution honoring and congratulating the Drexel University Women's and Men's Basketball Teams for winning their respective Colonial Athletic Association CAA title games and qualifying for the Women's and Men's 2021 NCAA Basketball Tournament.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Scola offers two bills entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to revise the rules and requirements pertaining to tobacco retailers and tobacco retailer permits to allow transfers of retailer permits to new locations.
For the committee?
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spruce Street, Fifth Street, South Street, and Eighth Street.
For the committee?
Councilwoman Bass offers one resolution. Entitled a resolution recognizing March 2021 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month to understand the symptoms of colorectal cancer and the importance of regular screenings and increased access to screenings in underserved communities.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers one bill and two resolutions. Entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by city council proposing an amendment to the educational supplement to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter relating to the eligibility, selection, and removal of the members of the Board of Education relating to the Board of Education's responsibility for the administration of the school district and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and make arrangements for the special election.
For the committee?
Sorry to make Council President, Mr. Decker, just wanted to make another announcement. Channel 64 feed is down once more. Unfortunately, we're working on it.
Council President, Council Members of Participants, we are now live.
Thank you. Thank you, and good afternoon. Before we proceed with the session, I just would like to offer our sincere apologies. We had a technical glitch that took us offline. We wanted to make sure that our feed was available in a very transparent way, being able to be viewed by the public. 64, channel 64 feed was not operable. It is up and running now. We will start. We are going to ask for a... Do Chief Clerk to do a roll call, just to ensure that we have established a quorum in a very transparent way. Mr. Decker, if you can just call a roll real quick.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good afternoon. I am present.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good afternoon. I'm present.
Councilman Dobb?
Good afternoon. Present.
Councilwoman Gattie A?
Present.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good afternoon. I'm present.
Councilman Green?
Present.
Councilwoman Gim?
I am present.
Councilman Heenan?
Good afternoon. I am present.
Councilman Johnson?
Present.
Councilman Jones?
Good afternoon. Present.
Councilman O?
Present.
Councilman O'Neil?
Present.
Councilwoman Parker?
Present.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sánchez?
Present.
Councilman Scola?
Present.
Councilman Thomas?
Present.
Council President Clark?
President. Great. We're gonna get started. We're gonna start with the resolution that is being offered today by Councilman O. Mr. Decker, if you can please read that legislation, that resolution.
Councilman O offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the educational supplement of the Philadelphia Home Road Charter relating to the eligibility, selection, and removal of the members of the Board of Education relating to the Board of Education's responsibility for the administration of the school district and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Thank you. I'm gonna recognize Councilman O. I believe he wanted to be recognized.
Thank you very much, Council President. There's a bill attached to that. I just wanted to briefly explain. Of course, everyone is concerned about education, public schools, and there are other issues that arise. What I have done is I have introduced the concept of dividing the school district into five regions of two contiguous or connected adjoining council districts making one region. Five regions whereby the voters, the people, the parents, their children, residents can elect a regional school board member to represent them and their needs in a way more tailored to what they want. I believe that would improve equity, quality, transparency, and accountability. There would be five elected school board members and four appointed members by the mayor. That, of course, has to pass council and, of course, has to be approved by the voters if it gets that far. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. Their resolution will refer to committee, and, Mr. Decker, you have a bill also.
Councilman O also introduces an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by city council proposing an amendment to the educational supplement to the Philadelphia Home Road Charter relating to the eligibility, selection, and removal of members of the Board of Education relating to the Board of Education's responsibility for the administration of the school district and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and make arrangements for the special election.
Thank you. That bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
Councilman O also offers an additional resolution recognizing Cohen Thompson, founder of Skate University, for his outstanding contributions and ongoing service to disadvantaged youth in his native West Philadelphia community.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of the bills and resolutions. Today, we have no reports from committee, so we will move on to the consideration of the calendar. There have been no bills on the first week in calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210, 209, 210, 210, 210, 211, 210, 212, 210, 213, 210, 214, 210, 216, 210, 217, 210, 219, 210, 220, 210, 122-A, 200628, 210075, and 210160. All of the resolutions and bills are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we proceed with the consideration of our calendar, we will have our public comment session. We're gonna take a brief five to 10-minute recess. We will be back in five to 10 minutes this time to give our technology people an opportunity to connect with our speakers today. So, take a very brief five to 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for calling Philadelphia City Council.
Medesto, are we in?
Yes, you're in, Lonnie.
Okay, hold on one second, please.
Okay.
Okay, to our callers, we are now connected to the live meeting. Again, if you're watching TV or listening to the live stream, please turn that down. You'll be able to hear the meeting and follow along here on your phone. When your name is called, I will unmute you. You do not need to do anything to unmute. You will hear loud beeps to know that you'll be unmuted, and then you'll be able to state your name and provide testimony. So, once we go live, please listen to Council President's direction, and please listen for the clerk to call your name. Came to Medesto. We are ready. And Chief Clerk, just want to let you know we have people who are still calling back in. So, as they call in, we will... As you call their name, if they're here, we'll let you know. If not, we'll let you know as well. We told everyone to call back in between 12:00 and 12:30 and 12:45.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie. Council President, we're ready to proceed. Whenever you're ready, I can coordinate with channel 64.
Council President, Council Members, and Participants, we are now live.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, before, uh, we do our public comment session, um, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Gaultier. Councilwoman? She here? And unless she wanted to, uh...
Council Pres, were you calling me?
No, I was trying to find Councilwoman Gaultier. Uh, I think she had to leave, but she wanted to leave her, uh...
All right, wanted to double check.
She still appears to be on the screen, so can someone text her?
Yeah, she wanted to leave a, uh, uh, request to leave a vap and wanted to be recorded in voting I on all bills and resolutions. So, somebody can text her if she can just call in. Uh, okay, um, we're gonna start now. Um, Mr. Decker, uh, you wanna call the first name on the list? Oh, wait a minute, hold on, let me get, you know, our public comment conversation. It's discombobulated today because of the timeline. Um, of course, we wanna start off by saying now that everyone is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider the public comment session as follows. Uh, public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for the possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, you will take your name, your phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Now, under ideal circumstances, uh, we will, could offer as much as three minutes. Uh, today, however, we have an extensive list and there will be two minutes, and we ask you to please adjust your testimony reflected two-minute time limit. Uh, in order to be fair, all those wishes to speak are told faithfully to the established time limit. And once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony, and when there are 30 seconds remaining, uh, you will be reminding of this. And once your time, uh, a lot of time has passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Shortly thereafter, you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Also reserved right to remember the number of speakers on repetitious comments that are being made. Uh, we wanna make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak on the legislation that is before us today. Uh, please to be aware that this public meeting is also being recorded, and because the meeting is public, which participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy, so by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. I will now ask that the Chief Clerk, please call the name, uh, first name on our list today. Mr. Decker?
Excuse me, um...
Councilwoman?
Council President.
Good, okay, yeah. Just wanna recognize Councilwoman Gaultier.
Um, I need to leave the meeting to handle official bus, uh, business, and I want it to be recorded as voting I on all bills and resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, yeah, it shall be reflected that Councilwoman is, um, leaving on official business. She will be recorded as voting I on all bills and resolutions. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker?
The first speaker is Barbara S- S- Szelzal.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, I am Barbara Szelzal, the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Cultural Fund, and thank you for this opportunity to speak and support a bill number 210160 and this infusion of funds to Philadelphia's art sector, which continues to be devastated by COVID-19. And many sincere thanks to the council members for recognizing the urgency of this moment. It's encouraging to see these emergency funds coming to Philly's arts and arts organizations. I should say the artists and arts organizations. It's critical as the city recovers. It's so very important that the city's support of the arts continue beyond this moment and be reflected in the cultural fund's fiscal year '22 allocation and beyond. The Cultural Fund, on behalf of the city, has been partnering with and providing funding to the city's arts and culture nonprofits for over 25 years. We meaningfully involve the arts community in our work, from the composition of our Board of Directors to the 100-plus grant review panelists every year who conducts site visits and carefully assess the applications. In a few weeks, we'll be giving grants totaling nine, 914,000 to 205 small arts organizations. That's down $2 million from last year pre-pand- pre-pandemic and the subsequent reduction to our allocation. Over 100 organizations will not receive a P C F grant this year, and those small organizations that will will receive 45% less. The Philadelphia Cultural Fund has a long history of and is committed to removing barriers to funding, especially for those small community-based arts organizations that are traditionally considered ineligible for foundation support. As evidence of that, this year, a grant is going to an organization with an annual budget of $650. That's small, and it's one of three organizations with budgets below $1,000, and 88 grantees have budgets below $50,000. That's the sweet spot of the Philadelphia Cultural Fund, one that we've been nurturing on behalf of the city for many years. And the Philadelphia Cultural Fund stands with the city in its commitment to the arts now and into the future. Thank you all for your time and your service to Philadelphia.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Richard Glyniak.
Uh, I'm here. Uh, uh, Council President, I submitted written testimony, and there's some pictures attached that would be helpful to look at while I give my testimony.
Okay, just, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. Thank you.
Okay. Dear Council President and City Council Members, thank you for the opportunity to express my strong support for Bill 210075 and its Mixed Income Housing Bonus Amendment. I am a Democratic Committee person, Sosno Zone Committee member, long-term 19146 homeowner, past Streets Department Engineer, a strong supporter of development without displacement that honors facades, front porches and cornice lines, and activist and preservation, preservationist as stated in a recent Inquirer article in which I was quoted. The existing Mixed Income Housing Bonus was intended to increase availability of affordable housing. Unfortunately, it allows a developer to meet the requirement by contributing to a housing trust fund. One Inquirer article makes clear that the Mixed Income Housing Bonus, coupled with other economic forces, is having the opposite effect, most likely continuing the documented gentrification in the graduate hospital area where in Track 19, African-American population decreased 32% between 2009 and 2016. In the past nine months, I'm screaming, in the past three months, nine historic row houses have been demolished without providing any affordable units at all. Instead, five luxurious condos are going to be built on each of these greater-than-1700-square-feet RM1 zone lots. 752, 754 South 16th Street, 1621, 1623 Bainbridge Street.
Go ahead, sir. You have 30 seconds. Go ahead.
30 seconds. Okay, the, it's, uh, nine properties. Uh, Bill 210075 and its Mixed Income Housing Bonus Amendment would fix this loophole by requiring developers to actually build an affordable unit at each of these 19146 building sites. I urge... So, please, Council President and City Council Members unanimously support Councilman Johnson's Bill 210075 and its Common Sense Amendment to the Mixed Income Housing Bonus, just as the Rules Committee did last week. Respectfully, Richard Glyniak, and please, uh, read my written testimony, because there's a lot, uh, I had to say, and I didn't have the time.
It's okay. We will. It will be put into the record also. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Murray Spencer.
Good afternoon.
He is not on the line.
Okay.
Next speaker is John DiSanto.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Uh, just state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
John DiSanto, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of Resolution 210214 honoring Joe Frazier. So, hello, everyone. I am, um, I thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. As I said, my name's John DiSanto, and I'm the founder of nonprofit organization and the website PhillyBoxingHistory.com. And I remember the night of March 8th, 1971 very well, the night that Ali and Frazier fought for the first time. I was eight years old, pushing nine, and I had two older brothers. And on that night, one of them was rooting for Ali and the other was rooting for Frazier. So, I had a front row seat right there in my house to the great debate that had taken over the rest of the world. Who was gonna win, Ali or Frazier? My brothers, my brothers argued it all the way up to the fight, and that night, we all waited up, listening on the radio, waiting to hear any news about who had won. Now, I was eight years old, I fell asleep. But I do remember the event, all the excitement, and I remember the newspaper the next day, those photos of, from the fight with Ali down in the 15th round and both their faces marked from the battle. And this is the very first memory of boxing in my, in my life. And I think my love of the sport started right then and there. And when I become really interested in the sport, and in 2004, I created Philly Boxing History. So, since 50th anniversary of this great fight approach, I thought about it quite a bit. And I really believe that this was the greatest single moment in Philadelphia's boxing history. There are a lot of great moments, but no fight was ever bigger before or after. Um, it was the fight of the century. So, um, on this 50th anniversary, the one thing I'm sure of is that 50 years from now, the 100th anniversary of this fight will be celebrated too. And probably won't be us celebrating, but the memory of these guys, Frazier and Ali, will still be alive and well. So, I think it's important that we do things right now, including this resolution, uh, to ensure that everyone, um, who comes after us continues to remember and honor Joe Frazier and Ali and everything they did. Um, and I believe that this resolution honors them and, um, sets in the record, um, this, this, this milestone, and I think it'll help to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Jonetta Frazier.
Hi, good afternoon, um, City Council. My name is Jonetta Frazier Gibson. I am a Philadelphia resident and one of the 11 children of the late, great heavyweight champion of the world. Um, at that time, I was three years old, so I don't kind of really remember all of the history that has been in place, but it's very, a very great honor to be able to have my dad recognized as one of the resolutions and how he sacrificed and had hard work and put all of his best efforts in front. And to notice and see that how this 50th anniversary has made such an impact in our community and that, um, our dad really, he really, really enjoyed the city of Philadelphia and the people that he helped in the community, such as training the kids, even taking some kids to school in the morning, helping financially and putting clothes on the backs of some people who couldn't afford clothes and housing young men at their Joe Frazier's gym. So, again, I just wanted to thank the City Council and support, uh, the resolution, and the family thanks you all for honoring our dad, Smoke, our dad, Padre, our daddy. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Peter Lyde.
Hi, good morning, good morning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lyde. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, please.
Uh, my name is Peter Lyde, L-Y-D-E, and I wanna start by saying, and still, heavyweight champion of the world, Smoking Joe Frazier. I'm gonna thank the City of Philadelphia, Councilman Johnson, and, and the President Council, and all what you guys have been doing to, uh, recognize, uh, Joe Frazier and his greater accomplishments, maybe 50 years later with him and Muhammad Ali was one of the greatest sports members in history, and he was from Philadelphia. So, that's what makes it so good that we have a Philadelphia, a real champion here in Philadelphia 50 years later. We're still, we're still excited about it. Uh, Joe Frazier, as you guys know, had a gym at 2917 North Broad Street for 50 years, and he was one of the guys who provided the safe haven for people who had nowhere else to go. He spent his money out of his own pocket, you know, he, he didn't make any money out that gym. There was no, uh, no monies from the, from the government. There was no, no, uh, 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 endowment or anything like that. It was all his money. And he lived here, he switched his money here, he's, uh, he died here, he raised his children here, he raised people inside and outside the ring as champions, um, physically and mentally. And this is what we're missing today. We miss those kind of, uh, 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 situations now. Uh, we just wanna thank you again, uh, the City of Philadelphia, who , which you're doing all the, you know, all the different things you're doing for Philadelphia, statues and murals and all that kind of thing. I'm just, and I just have to say that, you know, uh, uh, champions come and go, uh, legends never, never die. And for the Council President, uh, Clark, I have one question for you. What do you call the man who beat the greatest? Smoking Joe Frazier?
Ah.
Thank you.
I was actually gonna say the greatest.
No, I said the man, I said the man who beat the greatest.
Yeah, well, if he beat the greatest, then he's the greatest.
Greater. I appreciate you.
Greater.
Thank you guys so very much. Anytime someone could do something for Joe Frazier, his legacy is a good thing, so no matter who does it. So, thank you guys so very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Mark Frazier.
Good afternoon. Wanna thank the, uh, City Council and all, and all officers for giving this opportunity to represent Smoking Joe Frazier and honoring him for being the champion he was inside the ring and outside the ring. He was definitely a pillar to the, to the city of Philadelphia, and he liked, and Philadelphia was definitely a pillar to Smoking Joe Frazier as well. He, um, being the champion that he was, you know, he always loved working with the youth and all the, all the helping out, helping out those who couldn't help themselves, but mainly he liked to work with the youth, and he tried to do something by presenting that gymnasium there in North Philadelphia, so they could have something to do, keep them out of trouble, keep them out of the way. And he did that for over 40, 45, 50 years, and then now it no longer stands. But then again, I mean, we do appreciate that guy. He's being, you know, being remembered. All the good work he's doing. Just wanna thank the council and everybody for, you know, remembering Joe Frazier as well.
Thank you, Mark. Mark, just state your name for the record.
Mark Frazier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Stephen Makajewski.
Hi, my name is Stephen Makajewski, and I'm speaking in favor of Bill 210210 Lights South Philadelphia. I'm a longtime resident of Philadelphia and retired emergency social worker for the city of Philadelphia. I rescued many people who were dying in their homes and unfortunately found several dead people, but none of those disturbing scenes prepared me for what I encountered on Friday, October 2nd, 2020. I was the first to witness the scene in Center City on October 2nd on my routine bird collision monitoring run, but something was very different that day. And I, when I ran out of supplies, I called Keith Russell, Urban Conservation Mid-Atlantic Water Bomb. Birds were dying everywhere. I could not keep up and bag each individual bird. People, strangers on the streets were asking me what was happening. A woman told me she walked from City Hall to 18th Street and said the streets were covered with dead and dying birds. Another woman showed me a smartphone photo of a common confused yellow throat that landed on her handbag. A staff member, Jose Martinez of Comcast Technical Center, dumped 75 dead birds from his dustpan in front of me. I separated the injured from the dead and made that iconic picture showing a large number of colorful dead birds on the streets of Philadelphia. That photo, that image of massive death went viral in newspapers around the world, from Philly to Canada, South America, UK, Europe, China, Indonesia, Australia, Nigeria. My life has been forever changed by that catastrophic mass casualty event. Please take this first step in dealing with the universal problem of bird window structure, pass the Lights Out Resolution and show that the wor- show the world that Philadelphia is not only the city of brotherly love, sisterly affection, but is also bird friendly. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Robert Peck.
Thank you for the invitation to speak. I too am speaking on behalf of Resolution 210210. My name is Robert Peck. I'm a lifelong resident of Philadelphia and I'm Senior Fellow at the Academy of Natural Sciences of Drexel University. Since 1812, scientists associated with the academy have been studying birds and other subjects relating to the natural world. Since the end of the 19th century, we have detected... Since the end of the nineteenth century, we have detected the devastating effect nighttime lights can have on migrating birds. As you know, each year, tens of millions of birds pass through Philadelphia during their spring and fall migration between their breeding and wintering grounds. We have bird specimens in our collection at the academy that were killed when they collided with the newly illuminated windows of City Hall as far back as eighteen ninety-six. As part of the Lights Out Philly program that was announced last week, property managers and their tenants are being asked to voluntarily switch off unnecessary lights, both inside and outside of their buildings between midnight and six AM during the birds' spring and fall migration. This will not only help protect the birds, but will save energy, reduce individual building costs, and reduce our carbon footprint as a city. Comcast, which owns the two tallest buildings in the city, Brandywine Realty Trust, the city's largest landlord, and a dozen other building operators and owners have already pledged their support of this effort. This is not a political issue and is certainly not a partisan one. It's about doing the right thing for life on earth, helping to reduce our carbon footprint and saving countless thousands of migrating birds each year. As a lifelong Philadelphian, represented by Councilmember Cindy Bass, and as a representative of Drexel University, I would like to thank Councilmembers Richardson and Kenyatta Johnson for introducing this resolution in support of Lights Out Initiative for our city, and I hope it will receive your unanimous support. Please vote in favor of Lights Out Philly Resolution two one oh, two one oh. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is John Rowden.
I'm sorry, did you say John Roden?
John Roden?
Roden.
Yes.
Good, good afternoon. State your name for the record. Proceed with your testimony, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is John Roden. I am the Senior Director for Bird Friendly Communities of the National Audubon Society, and I oversee all of our bird friendly communities activity, including um, our Lights Out program. Uh, Audubon was recently part of a group that published uh, information that demonstrated that over the past fifty years, we've lost three billion birds from the number of birds that we have in North America. And additional research indicates that up to one billion birds per year are killed by collisions with buildings and the human built infrastructure around the country. And because of, of those two pieces of information, it just adds additional context to um, what Steve saw last October in Philadelphia and what Bob Peck has just talked about. And so the, what we are asking cities across the country to do, including Philadelphia, is to join us in creating better solutions in our cities that help birds during migration and during their daily lives as well. And the Resolution two ten two ten is an excellent first step for Philadelphia to take to recognize and correct the problem of artificial light at night and to make Philadelphia safer for birds uh, during migration. So I urge the council to unanimously support Resolution two ten two ten. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Monica Nakaro.
Hello, this is, I'm the Director of Programs for the Brain Injury Association of Pennsylvania, and I wanted to talk about the resolution uh, put forth by Councilperson Bass to declare March Brain Injury Awareness Month and to thank uh, Councilperson Bass for doing so. I just wanted to, to bring up a few points to add to within the resolution, and that is that brain injury is a chronic condition. It's not something that occurs and you recover from and it's over. In the case of more mild brain injuries like concussion, that happens in the vast majority of cases, although there are percentages who don't recover fully. But for people with more moderate to severe brain injuries, this is expected to be a lifelong condition that will require support for many years. Um, there is no one face of brain injury. You can't look at a person always and see it. It is considered an invisible injury. And in most cases, it's sudden and the person has to adjust to a major change in, in who they are, how their brain works, what they can do, what roles they used to have that they might get back to and the ones that they can't. And so it is a huge adjustment issue and a lot of support is needed. I just wanted to bring to awareness two other issues related to brain injury that might be less known. And one is that um, that non-fatal drug overdoses result in brain injury. We think of those as drug conditions, as substance abuse disorders, and with rescue drugs like Novocan, a person can, life can be saved. But when they're brought back and they start breathing again, there was almost always a period of time where the brain was not getting oxygen. And after two to three minutes without oxygen, there is brain damage. I wanted to let everyone know that this is a growing area of awareness. And one other is that we're seeing more and more reports of central nervous system effects of COVID nineteen and starting to see some individuals needing cognitive rehabilitation as a result. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Dr. Lane Brown.
Dr. Brown is not on the line.
The next speaker is Melody Time.
Good afternoon, how are you? Hi, Melody Time, Executive Director with the Coalition Against Hunger. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Bass for sponsoring the resolution, recognizing March as National Nutrition Month, and recognizing our work at the Coalition. Thank you also to all members of City Council for listening to our input this afternoon about this incredibly important issue. At the Coalition, we take a holistic approach to our work and hunger in the Philadelphia region. We provide immediate relief through emergency food referrals and provide support for local food pantries and soup kitchens. Research has shown that food pantries improve the food security, diet quality, and nutritional habits of their clients while helping to minimize waste in the food system. We also provide short-term relief through our SNAP hotline where we help nearly three thousand five hundred households annually navigate and secure SNAP benefits. SNAP education has been shown to increase cardiovascular health among children, improve food resource management and diet quality among adults, and has the potential to have a positive impact on a wide variety of other health outcomes. And lastly, we work for long-term solutions by promoting systemic change for our advocacy efforts. For example, right now, we're working in partnership with allies across the Pennsylvania region to improve nutrition for infants and toddlers as well as their mothers by working to improve enrollment, retention, and modernization of the WIC program. Unfortunately, we all know that access to nutritious food was a challenge for so many of our residents in Philly prior to COVID. And the current crisis has only served to exacerbate hunger, particularly for communities of color and families with children. I cannot stress strongly enough that we need to continue to work together, supported by some of the city's American Recovery Plan dollars, to increase access to nutritious food, not just for uh, our time during the pandemic, but also in the years to come. As families work together to get back on their feet, uh, we continue to do this work and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is John Roser.
He is not on the line.
Brenda Shelton Dunston.
Good afternoon. I am the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Black Women's Health Alliance. I'd like to thank uh, Councilwoman Cindy Bass for allowing me to testify on this important issue. We at the Black Women's Health Alliance support this Resolution two one zero two two oh, recognizing March as National Nutrition Month. This resolution directly supports our mission to improve health out, care outcomes, and eliminate and or reduce health disparities. Of women of color, their families, through advocacy, education, research, support activities, programs, and services. The resolution directly intersects with the goals and objectives of our organization's evidence-based wellness support group, the Primetime Sister Circle Program. The following statistically significant findings in health improvements resulted from more than three hundred women between forty and above participating in the program. Weight loss, seventy-nine percent, forty-eight percent decrease in hypertension. COVID pulled back the curtain, not only on the heightened vulnerability of the African-American community due to health disparate conditions, but also to food and nutrition issues. According to Dr. Der Harris Mazarin of Tufts University, food is the number one cause of poor health in America. We must leverage food as medicine. I have attached a very informative Food and Nutrition Are Critical to the Current and Post-COVID-nineteen Response infograph to my testimony. D W, D W H A wholeheartedly supports this resolution and calls upon City Council members as a whole to support this resolution not only during National Nutrition Month, but throughout the year. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Just, just state your name for the record, please.
Dunston.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Jones. Lori Jones.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Lori Jones. I serve as CEO of PhilAbundance. Thank you, Councilmember Bass and Council President um, Clark for this opportunity. I'm, I'm here to testify in support of Resolution twenty-one zero twenty, which recognizes March as National Nutrition Month. PhilAbundance is a hunger relief organization serving Philadelphia and the surrounding region. Nutritious food is key to a person's health and well-being. For children, this is particularly true. And accessing nutritious food, which is often more expensive than less healthier choices, can be challenging in neighborhoods without grocery stores. PhilAbundance seeks to fill the gap by distributing healthy food, especially fresh produce, which is distributed with the city during COVID. Um, but also through our Onfilling Healthy Pantry Initiative, which provides nutrition training, information about diet-related chronic diseases, and recipe cards through agencies across the city. PhilAbundance will continue to source and purchase healthy food for the people we serve, and we appreciate council taking the time to acknowledge our work. Thank you again, Councilmember Bass, Council President Clark, and to all members of City Council for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Danae Barbore.
The next are not on the list. The next speaker up should be Patrice.
Good afternoon. My name is, my name is Patrice Lanier, and I am um, supporting the Bill two ten one twenty-two. And my testament will be today. A year ago, because of the pandemic, I took time off without any pay. Now, again, I'm going through the same thing without any pay. I'm a security officer, I'm a frontline worker, and I just desperately need to have pay during sick time. I have children, I have grandchildren, and I'm a pretty nice person. I just want something that I feel as though in our society, if you are a hard worker, you should have some type of restitution that could take care of you so that you don't have to put yourself into a financial strain. At the end of the uh, time, what else is there to do? Basically, that is all I, that is all basically that I do have to say. I thank you guys for listening to me.
Thank, thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Glenn Mullins.
No other callers are on the line.
There were another speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
I know we had a number of speakers uh, to testify and supported this bill, but unfortunately, because of the technology glitch, um, did not reconnect. But this for the record, uh, they were, I think we had uh, probably as many as ten, maybe more, that supported that particular bill, that's for the record, prior to the technology glitch. Okay, um, that concludes our public comment session for today. Um, we will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes calendar. I want to ask Mr. Decker to please read the title of Resolution number two one oh, two oh nine.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of thirteen thirty-one North Eighth Street, located in the Fifth Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter sixteen seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and copied second. All in favor of said resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two one zero, two one zero.
A resolution supporting a City of Philadelphia Lights Out campaign and recognizing and honoring the Bird Safe Philadelphia Coalition, the Building Industry Association of Philadelphia, and the Building Owners and Managers Association Philadelphia in their collaborative effort to protect the migratory bird population.
Chair again recognizes Gilmore Richardson for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank all those affiliated with the Lights Out Philly campaign. And on behalf of Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson and myself, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and copied second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, two one zero, two one one.
A resolution urging U.S. Senators Casey and Toomey and the U.S. Senate to pass House Resolution one, Senate Resolution one, For the People Act.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Quinones Sanchez and I, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and copied second. All those in favor of said resolution, say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero, two one two.
A resolution recognizing and supporting working women and mothers impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic in honor of Women's History Month and calling for a robust federal response to our nation's first she-session.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of all working women and working mothers who get the job done every single day, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Again.
Thank you. It's been moved and copied second. Let the resolution be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two one zero, two one three.
A resolution honoring Amanda Gorman, the first national youth poet laureate, for becoming the youngest poet to ever speak at a U.S. presidential inauguration.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, in honor of Women's History Month, I enthusiastically move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and enthusiastically introduced and seconded. All those in favor of said resolution.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two one zero, two one four.
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Philadelphia's own Smoking Joe Frazier on the fiftieth anniversary of his heavyweight championship win over Muhammad Ali in the fight of the century.
And Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for motion.
Council President, I again enthusiastically move the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and the bell has been rung. All those in favor of said resolution, say aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two one zero, two one six.
A resolution commemorating the life and legacy of community activist Sean W. Wilson, whose tireless advocacy against gun violence and racial injustice advanced community safety and extended a powerful model of neighborhood engagement for former first responders and veterans in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks for motion.
Thank you, Council President. Um, in the honor of Sean Wilson and loving on purpose, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in honor of all of those, as Councilwoman said, um, all those in All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, two-one-zero, two-one-seven.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the Father Judge High School Wrestling Team for their second consecutive win of the Philadelphia Catholic League Wrestling Championship in their two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty season.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas for a motion.
Thank you, Council President, and congratulations to those young people, the families as well as the adults, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and property second. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two-one-zero, two-one-nine.
A resolution recognizing March two thousand twenty-one as Brain Injury Awareness Month to increase understanding of chronic brain injury, reduce stigma, showcase the diversity of injury across demographics, and improve care and support.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this very important resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and property second. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it. Very important resolution has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two-one-zero, two-two-zero.
A resolution recognizing March two thousand twenty-one as National Nutrition Month to educate Philadelphia's on how to make informed food choices and develop healthy eating and physical activity habits while raising awareness of the need for accessible nutritious food.
And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this very important resolution as well.
Second.
Second.
One more time on this very important resolution. It's been moved and property second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two-one-zero, one-two-two-A.
An ordinance amending Section nine forty-one sixteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Health Emergency Leave to establish leave time for public health emergencies and modify existing provisions concerning the paid sick leave and make technical changes.
Thank you. This bill having been read on two different days, the question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dobbs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier is voting aye. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil. Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez. Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of two-zero-zero, six-two-eight.
An ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes.
Thank you. This bill having been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dobbs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, two-one-zero, zero-seven-five.
An ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes.
This bill having been read on two different days. Question now, is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dobbs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members present, voting in affirmative. The bill passes.
Up next. Come on up.
Okay, somebody needs to mute. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill number two-one-zero, one-six-oh.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one from the General Fund, the Council, to the General Fund, the Managing Director.
This bill having been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Dobbs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and honoring the Defender Association of Philadelphia for their tireless pursuit of justice for our indigent population and designating the day of May eight, March eighteen, two thousand twenty-one as Public Defense Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, may I make some brief remarks?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Today is Public Defenders Day. It was established in nineteen sixty-three as a result of a case in Florida, Gideon versus Wainwright, where an individual accused of a crime asked for a competent lawyer, was not given it, and wound up getting five years as a result. That court case went all the way to the Supreme Court where it was cited that the Sixth Amendment of the Constitution guarantees people, and particularly people that have no financial means, to be represented in the court of law. In this Public Defenders Day, I'd like to note for the record that the Philadelphia Defenders Association was established in nineteen thirty-four, thirty years before that court case, by some Philadelphia attorneys that futuristically saw that this Sixth Amendment needed to be upheld. I want to further go on and say that since that time, they have represented individuals from the beginning of their life to adulthood in various capacities, whether they are advocates for them dealing with custody cases, DHS cases, where they serve as an advocate for young people or public defenders on the other side of adulthood, where they need representation in our courts. I want to just say for this year, just this year alone, they've represented fifty-four thousand cases in the city of Philadelphia. And like my colleagues have stepped up to the plate to talk about Women's History Month, I want to recognize Keir Bradford-Grey, who is the chief defender, who does an awesome job in that capacity. So much so that she is now taking her talents elsewhere. I regret to inform all of my colleagues, and for one, I will truly, truly miss her advocacy. She, when President Clark appointed her as the co-chair for the Criminal Justice Reform Committee, served as my jimmy cricket on my shoulder to make sure that we always kept the public's interests, the people's interests first. I can just cite a few things where she has closed jails. The House of Correction is no longer there because of her and her colleagues' efforts. I can tell you that she went on to represent over five hundred, close to five hundred individuals that were lifers, juvenile lifers, that had to be resentenced because it was proven unconstitutional to give a young person an indefinite sentence. She had to go back and open up old cases to do that. She stepped up to the plate in a major way, and many, many young people have come home to begin a fruitful life outside of incarceration. I wouldn't have known any of this but for Councilman Greenly and Councilman Green, who we spent the day over in the Defender's Office, really, truly taking a deeper dive into what they do. I will tell you, we, I don't, I can't speak for Councilman Green, but I was shocked to know the depth to which this organization, nonprofit organization, does its job. I want to go on a little bit and just say that she will be sorely missed. I don't say that about everybody. Sometimes I just vote aye politely, but this is someone that we hope and pray that she will stay close to Philadelphia and close to the progressive wing of jurisprudence. And I'm thankful for the time, the five years, that I've had the opportunity to meet her and find what a quality individual Philadelphia has had the opportunity to know and benefit from her works. And with that, and I'll just, one more thing. We've had good directors of that program, whether we talk about Ellen Greenly, whether we talk about Ben Lerner, or whether we talk about Director Pollock. But she has separated herself to change that organization forever, and I'm thankful. With that, I move for, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of this resolution. It's important, to quote Member Bass's resolution. Second.
Second. It's been moved and enthusiastically seconded. All in favor said resolution, say aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution has been adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to consider the equitable allocation of resources for the school district of Philadelphia under the American Rescue Plan, introduced by Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to consider the equitable allocation of resources for the school district of Philadelphia under the American Rescue Plan, introduced by Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Moved and probably second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are another resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. My script does not have a place for speeches today, so I guess we won't have any. Just kidding, guys. Just kidding. So prior to recognizing our speeches for today, I have to read a couple of housekeeping notes. I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature available in the Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with this, the chat feature must only be used for that particular purpose. And with that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? And Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I, of course, want to note, as many have read and seen, about the murders in Atlanta, eight were killed. Six Asian women, one white woman, one white man, and one Hispanic man was wounded. And I just wanted to offer thoughts and prayers to the families and loved ones of the eight murder victims and the survivor. Here in Philadelphia, I also want to thank the Philadelphia Police Department for increasing patrols to Asian-American business areas. It's very much appreciated, the offer of care and support. But I also want to note that in Atlanta in two thousand nineteen, ninety-nine people were killed, and in two thousand twenty, one hundred thirty people were killed. Compare that to Philadelphia. In two thousand nineteen, three hundred fifty-six Philadelphians were killed, and in two thousand twenty, four hundred ninety-nine people were killed. And as of today, I think we have one hundred three murders. I would just like to urge the mayor and the district attorney and our chief law enforcement folks to make available to every neighborhood that is facing skyrocketing murder rates, shootouts, violent crimes, the level of protection and service that they need and want. As we move forward, dealing with issues that arise in our country over racism, violent attacks, and others, I just want us to say that it really helps us to know each other, know our history, and not get it through a lens, to get broad perspectives about who we are and how we interrelate to each other. Asian-American history has been absent. The number of people that are defined as Asian-American is really broad. Sixty-five percent of the world are not white, black, or brown, but when they arrive in the United States, they fit into this little category called Asian-American. They probably don't think of themselves as Asian-American. And if you don't fit into a category, then you got to choose which category you want to belong to, and oftentimes the choice is Asian-American. Because of that, there are underlying reasons that people have really negative and incorrect and false stereotypes about other people. And as much as I appreciate the fact that people want to stop the Asian hate, if we don't address don't address the underlying reasons that people hate, we can address the beatings, the shootings, but we won't get rid of that. And that applies for everybody. That applies for everyone, including Asian-Americans. We have to know each other. So with that, I certainly want to thank everyone in Philadelphia for their concern and responses during this time of a national surge in Asian-American and Asian hate. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Very, very, very challenging times. You must come together. On behalf of the Majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President, and I also want to open my hand. I'm using my hand. Every time you see these terrible hate crimes, it brings back memories for all of us, terrible things that have happened, and it's very sad. So today, I wanted to speak about something that you know I'm going to talk about, which is vaccination rates. And I want to talk about the vaccination rates because we seem to be falling behind on our vaccination rates, and we're clearly falling behind on the vaccination for racial equity also. On vaccination rates, Philadelphia has a current fully vaccinated rate, according to our website, of five point seven percent. Chicago is almost double, at ten point three. San Antonio is at eight point nine. San Diego is at sixteen point seven. Phoenix is at twenty-one. Boston is at ten. And Atlanta is thirteen point four. We are at five point seven. In the area of racial equity, when FEMA in the administration shows the convention center over the Lincoln Financial Field for its only type-one mass vaccination site, I warned and was concerned that putting our biggest vaccination site in a predominantly white neighborhood and using an invitation list that is overwhelmingly white would only exacerbate the racial inequity in vaccinations across our city. The convention center site was chosen, in large part because it would help us achieve racial equity in vaccinations pushed back. Today, the lead story on the front page of the Philadelphia Inquirer states, "Racial Gap in Vaccine Worsens." The article analyzes the numbers and came to one conclusion. Putting our FEMA site at the convention center missed the mark on the administration's goals of equity vaccine distribution. To be more specific, the Inquirer said, "If put the FEMA site open two weeks ago, eleven point nine percent of white residents had been vaccinated, compared with six point four percent of black residents. In just two weeks from there, that gap, that differential, the five point five percentage points between white and black, has nearly doubled to ten point five. FEMA site fueled a spike in the white vaccination rate, which grew to twenty-one point nine percent, compared with eleven point four percent of black residents. Make no mistake, this was preventable. The administration knew the registry that invited residents to the FEMA site was overwhelmingly white. It knew that this site was a neighborhood site, sixty-seven percent white in Center City, and they moved ahead, counting goals of racial equity and speed in distribution. In response to the problem, the administration said for the next six days, we will reserve half the FEMA doses for those living in zip codes with the greatest number of vulnerable residents, namely our people of color in Philadelphia, but only for six days. I know this body is working really hard to coordinate with all of our known networks, community leaders in these targeted areas to try and get this city to where it ought to be, but with only six days to do this, I have serious concerns. Six days of racial equity at the FEMA mega-site doesn't really work. Even though the administration's plan to put more small-scale sites in black and brown neighborhoods, over the past three weeks, we've seen or put six new sites in underserved neighborhoods, and I think that's great. I'm in total favor of that. But the issue is that these locations lack capacity, and at this pace, people of color in Philadelphia will not catch up. We need capacity. Let me speak to the facts again as to how Philadelphia is doing compared to other cities of our size across America on vaccination rates. Chicago, ten point three. San Diego, sixteen point seven. Phoenix, twenty-one. Boston is at ten. Atlanta is thirteen point four, and we are at five point seven. To me, the hardest hitting facts here are how far behind we are on fully vaccinating our people and the racial equity for vaccinations. So once again, I am pleading with this administration to do what every big city in America has done, whether it's the Man Center, or the Link, or any other mass site. We need a FEMA mega-site, and let's get started on vaccinating our residents and get a win here on equity and speed for our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you very much, Council President. Yesterday, we had a vigil in Philadelphia Chinatown with our number of our council colleagues, members of the community, congressional representatives. I want to thank all my colleagues and other people out in the public. I mean, one of the hardest things about an incident of violence that occurs is what we saw in Georgia, is that it can often feel very lonely and isolating. Hate violence in particular has an ability to isolate people and drive them to the margins, but it was encouraging that yesterday, you know, your phone blows up with messages of support and, you know, here locally, and it just means a lot, and I just want to thank everybody who took the time to do that. You know, I did want to take a moment, and I want to thank Councilman O for just, you know, drawing out a few of the things, but I did want to talk a little bit about what was shared last night because it feels important to talk a little bit about how anti-Asian hate and how we deal with it is both similar to, but a little bit distinctive from other forms of race hatred and how it exhibits itself, and that's like how we talk about it. I mean, at its core, I think one of the things that Councilman O has talked about is the idea of two hundred percent increase in anti-Asian incidents that are actually reported, you know, here in Philadelphia. It becomes very hard because many people see these things as being unrelated. They're an isolated incident here or one over there. In a large city like Philadelphia, how does an attack on a senior maybe in, you know, in Chinatown relate to an attack or slurs on a business owner or an attack on a subway station? Are they related? But one of the things that we try to talk about, as many of us have often alluded to when we talk about hate, is that it is like a virus. It does spread. It happens not only when you have a former president using the words, but actual still city members of Congress, state representatives here in Pennsylvania, who will blame the coronavirus on foreign nations and try to scapegoat and repeatedly say from the pulpit and with official seals behind them that this is the fault of somebody else. It matters when media platforms and we create space and expand it, actually, for race hatred, for ignorance, for white supremacy, that has been going on, whether it's on national news or even locally. And then finally, I would say that, you know, the anti-Asian language and rhetoric that we've heard has been very targeted. It targets the most vulnerable people. It targets elders. It targets young people in schools. It targets women. It targets immigrants, and it targets even within our sectors, the most vulnerable, the most exploited, the most, you know, subjects of, you know, stereotypes, biases, you know, that range from mockery to all-out hatred, either in our pop culture, on mainstream media, including major movies and motion pictures and all of that. So, you know, the women who were killed yesterday in Atlanta, Georgia, were not only Asian, were not only immigrant, but they also worked in a spa, massage parlor, however we want to call it, but in an area of work that many people have mocked and turned their backs on. It calls us to account that it's no surprise that this gentleman, who, you know, frequented these areas, had a gendered hatred. It was very explicit towards women, towards women who are seen as or affiliated with potentially sex work. It means that they become more vulnerable. It makes it more apparent and important for us to be thoughtful about policing and how police are responsive to communities who can then be further exploited, victimized, or seen as available for violence. You know, seventy percent of the complaints that were reported were against women in terms of anti-Asian violence. So, you know, all of us who have experienced this, if you have young Asian-American daughters, women, you know, the link between a disagreement, even for me, when I went through it, especially like if you saw like the public commentary, some of you did, around, you know, a political disagreement, say around the Rizzo statue. The immediate move towards get out of my country and like things like you belong in a strip club and not on state council is the thing that people jump to immediately. And so I just want us to be really conscious of that and just share that, not because I think anyone here within our body or even who are likely watching shares any of that, but because as we witness it in other ways, it's important for us to understand, to grow, and to potentially, you know, come to a place where we can call it out, to denounce it, and then to end it ultimately. And then finally, I want to just talk briefly about the issue of white supremacy, which is really at the heart of what we saw in Georgia, at the heart of what we see happening all over the country. And, you know, yesterday, I think one of the most traumatic parts, as many people understand this, especially in black communities and communities of color who have witnessed law enforcement repeatedly not acknowledge, recognize this. But, you know, to have a county sheriff stand up and say that the mass shooter was fed up, quote unquote, had a really bad day, and this is what happened, those were his exact words. And then to go on and explain even further as almost being a defense attorney for the individual, to say that the man had a sex addiction and that he was seeking to stamp out his temptations, as if the stamping out of eight lives, the use of violence and weapons of violence, the gun violence that is impacting all of us, was somehow justified if done through religious fervor or a need to personally allow a man to cleanse inner demons. This kind of gendered hate is not unique. This kind of white supremacy being echoed not just by a shooter, but ideas that are then delivered in uniform by law enforcement should be something that we should all stand up to and identify. And in the weeks and months ahead, I hope that the Asian-American community can be better allies too, that, you know, to us, you know, stomping out, you know, anti-Asian hate means being in solidarity with all of other organizations, groups standing up against violence. I often felt yesterday like hate compounds hate, compounds hate, like it's like piles and piles of stuff, to see so many vulnerable people, the fact that these women were also Koreans, and it was very painful because I think even internally within our culture, like we're ashamed and we don't talk about, you know, women who are in this business, and it felt very complicit on my own end about it. But I also felt like when last night's vigil, we stood alongside pastors that we had walked with in Charlottesville, immigrant rights groups that we had stood with in liberating, you know, communities, LGBTQ families that we had stood with in grief, communities and people all over the city that reflected diversity and love. Hate doesn't just compound hate. Justice compounds justice. And so I hope what I'm saying here is that the effort to stop anti-Asian hate is, means that we stand in solidarity with Black liberation and Black Lives Matter. It means we stand in solidarity with efforts to end poverty. It means we stand in solidarity with our LGBTQ, trans brothers and sisters, sex workers, and others who are in an industry that needs to be uplifted with women and trans folks who need to be elevated and to have voice and visibility in this moment. It means that we feel like we have a more expansive view of our own humanity, and I hope I personally do better at this with all of you. So I just want to thank this body for being supportive in this moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, you know we are. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Just want to take a moment to ask all of us to take a moment of silence for a great young lady who has done some awesome work here in the City of Philadelphia, Ms. Emma Chappelle, passed away this week. Most people know it, some may not know it. African-American, 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 United States, here in the City of Philadelphia, but more importantly, is a legend and a doctor addressing issues of economic disparity here in the City of Philadelphia, also a part of the Black Women's Leadership Council that always speaks truth to power on behalf of African-American women. And also, just as a young elected official, former community activist, she's always been an encourage, supporting us, all the work that I've done, not only for you, but also to my family, just to acknowledge Emma Chappelle, all the great things she has done here in the City of Philadelphia. She's got a beautiful, beautiful spirit, always with a smile on her face. Just want to take a moment and to acknowledge her life and her legacy.
Moment of silence. Thank you, Councilman.
I thank the Council President. On Saturday, at one field, a fire recreation center, I hope we have a call to act, peace not gone initiative with residents living in southwest part of my district, we had a young man who was murdered in that recreation center slash playground. I had another young man who was murdered outside of 7-Eleven. So this is just an opportunity to lift up the spirits of the residents who live inside the neighborhood, but also listen to the ideas, recommendations, and solutions as we make sure that all of our parks, recreation facilities, within the second economic district, but also across the City of Philadelphia are safe. On this upcoming summer, and the Council President is going to acknowledge your work bringing together the administration, members of the council around the fierce urgency of now, when it comes to addressing the census gun violence that we're seeing here in the City of Philadelphia. And I'm confident, I will watch, do what we can, bless it as much as we can possible, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to make sure we don't reach six hundred, six hundred target as it relates to this issue of gun violence, which we're pretty much on the target of growing right now, but I'm just confident that, you know, our body working together, most importantly, the public, the public. You know, people in the neighborhood, when they see something, they have to say something. People in the neighborhood, when they hear about neighborhood beef that's going on, they have to step up and intervene in those beef, prior to the young men picking up guns and shooting at one another. And so I just wanted to let my constituents know that, again, we'll be having a call to action around the census gun violence in the southwest Philadelphia part of my district Saturday at one. If anybody is interested in coming and supporting, or more than welcome, but again, the mission always stays the same, staying on top of addressing the census gun violence that we're seeing here, on the City of Philadelphia, also coming up with solutions and partnership with the community. But it's not community private. Any strategy that's put forth will not be successful if there is not community input, partnership, and collaboration. And so just want to say that for the record, Council President, just thank you for the opportunity for the comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, it has to be all hands on deck. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo the words of my colleague, Councilman Kingana Johnson. Thank you for putting together a very timely conversation, especially as we prepare for the mayor's budget address on April fifteenth. We're going to have to do things differently than we've done in the past and use the resources of the city to try to find new ways to address the gun violence epidemic that we've seen in our city. And so your leadership in pulling together both the mayor, members of council, district attorney, police commissioner, to really start having some conversations, really pointed conversations and real conversations about ideas and strategies on how to address these issues and the fact that many of our colleagues, including council members Johnson and Jones... including councilmembers Johnson and, and Jones and Gardia and all members of council have been also reaching out to members of the community for different ideas and suggestions. Because as we get into the warmer months, there's definitely a great concern by a number of citizens about the increase in violence in the city of Philadelphia that we can't tolerate going forward. Councilmember Johnson also spoke and allowed us to have a moment of silence for Dr. Emma C. Chappelle, who, when I was a young banker, was someone that many of us looked up to for her leadership, being the, the first woman to be the vice president of a major bank in Pennsylvania, the first African American woman in the United States to create a commercial bank in the United States. And so she is someone that I've known for a very long time and she will definitely be, be missed. And then just want to echo the comments made by councilmembers O and G regarding what happened this week and the violence. And I, I agree with their comments that violence continues to beget violence. And I think it's also important for us, especially people of different perspectives or persuasions or ethnicities, to speak in solidarity with those who are being discriminated against. That hate that's directed at one other group will be directed at you as well. And so important that we continue to stand in solidarity with all those that try to bring race and violence and racism to our nation. And I, I think it's important that this is not a, a new issue, this issue of violence against various peoples. We know about the original sin to people of African descent in reference to slavery, the violence to Native Americans through Trail of Tears and other dynamics, violence that happened to those Hispanic descent in this country, but not, not as much as known in reference to the violence against those of Asian descent. And I had a chance to reflect on something this morning that why it's so important for us to talk about violence that's impacted your perspective and also speak up against violence and discrimination towards others. And I came across a speech that was made by Frederick Douglass in eighteen sixty-nine. And he spoke out against discrimination to Chinese individuals coming to this country based on immigration. And I'll just read a brief part of that very eloquent speech, which we all know Frederick Douglass was one to have. There are such things in the world as human rights. They rest upon non-conventional foundation, but are external, universal, and indestructible. Among these is the right of locomotion, the right of migration, the right which bring, which belongs to no particular race, but belongs alike to all and to all alike. It is a right you assert by staying here and your fathers asserted by coming here. It is this great right that I assert for the Chinese and the Japanese and for all other varieties of men equally with yourselves now and forever. I know no rights of race superior to the rights of humanity. And when there is a supposed conflict between human and national rights, it is safe to go the side of humanity. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Plain words. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for leading our effort to take a moment of silence for Dr. Emma Chappelle. The trailblazing, trend-setting, black woman who was breaking ceilings and knocking down glass doors in an industry predominantly, uh, uh, domi- dominated by men, made a place for us and told us we belong there too. She was unapologetic also about acknowledging that she would make the advancement of black women in any and every industry that you could think of, the crux or the nucleus of her life's legacy. And she did it and wasn't ashamed about it. Dr. Emma Chappelle received an honorary doctorate during my time at Lincoln University. It was actually nineteen ninety-three. It was during my, my senior year. Dr. Niarra Sudarkasa at that time was the first woman president of Lincoln University. And I don't know how many of you remember the ebony cover where they had Dr. Sudarkasa, Gloria Scott, who was then the president of Bennett, and Dr. Genetta Cole, who was the president of, of Spelman. And all of those women came to commencement that year. And Dr. Chappelle received an honorary degree. Now, for all of the people who know what Beaver College is, Beaver College, you know, was Beaver before it became Arcadia. We wanted to be able to say that Lincoln gave her her first honorary doctorate, but we didn't. We were second to, to Beaver College. But she held dear that honorary doctorate from Lincoln University. And it was an honor and a privilege to just watch all of that history unfold. So to her daughter Tracy, to Joanne Bell, to Rita, to those who were near and dear, you know, in and around, you know, when she was on the radio or out, or when she was in private. Thank you all so much for lifting her up while she could still smell her roses and acknowledging the importance of showing deference to those on whose shoulders that we stand. We are waiting for an update to her bio. We will be getting that soon. We will be doing a resolution here in council, in her honor. But we want the family to know that our thoughts and prayers are with them. Now finally, Mr. President, both you and Councilmember Jones, in particular, and our colleagues who were members of this body during the twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen session, know that I often boasted about how proud I am of the academic achievements realized by the students of Hill Freeman World Academy in the ninth district, led by Principal Majewski. I also often talked about, and, and we honored the school for its unrivaled music technology program that includes a state of the art. And this is where Councilmember Jones and I, we started jobbing each other across the floor because they have this state-of-the-art music recording studio that houses, listen to this, not Bad Boy Records, P. Diddy's label, but it houses the Hill Freeman Records. Yes, the school has its own record label and it's led by my friend Zeke Thurman. Now, you should know that the students have written, recorded, and produced so many songs and albums that I can't even tell you how many. But they even let U.S. Senator Casey and I be on one of their songs. And we, we were in the studio, we were like kids in a candy store. I had never been in a, a studio before. They are using music and all of its creative, unifying, and healing powers as the hook that encourage your students to ultimately end up expressing themselves and sharing their life stories and their everyday struggles. And they allow the music to be their platform. So, Mr. President, you know, while we were on our session earlier, it made my heart heavy this morning when I learned that the young man, Mr. Rodney Hargrove, who was gunned down and murdered in cold blood after being released from one of our county prisons, was a former Hill Freeman World Academy student. And he was a participant in the music technology program. Now, both Zeke Thurman and the lady by the name of Crystal, typewriter Oliver. She's a Grammy nominated platinum record selling artist. She's the vice president of the Philadelphia chapter of the Grammy Committee. Both of them worked together and they mentored Rodney when he was in the program. And while we were on this council session, they informed me that Rodney wrote and recorded a song called Fallen Soldiers, graphically outlining the real-life struggles and challenges that he was enduring as a young person in our city. We have reached out to the police department. Thank you, Captain Smith from the fourteenth and Commissioner Outlaw's office. They're going to try to put us in contact with the family so that the school can actually give the song to the family. But before anyone attempts to write off the value of Rodney's life by constantly referencing in articles and focusing on his arrest record, I want you to know that young man had a story. And if you listen to his song, you will understand why the work that we are doing in this body regarding employment opportunities, housing opportunities, supporting public education, it's not just policy. They are the tools that will, will give people hope and a reason to want to keep going. And music can be a powerful platform. Now, Councilmember Jones, before this happened, and, and I told you a little bit about it this morning, but that was even before I knew about Rodney's situation. Music is a powerful tool to give young people a voice, to, to, to share their perspectives without putting a filter on them. They get to tell you what they think and what they feel. We are going to unveil in a few weeks a program produced by this city council of Philadelphia that is going to use music as a tool to engage our young people, to use their creative genius and their authentic voices to help uplift our city and to motivate and inspire other young people to do the same. And so to Rodney's family, we want you to know that our thoughts and prayers are with you. To Mr. Majewski and Zeke, and Crystal, and all of his teachers who were at Hill Freeman World Academy and all of his fellow students, thank you. We're going to lift you up as well. But this example affirms why the program that we're working on can be helpful. So I say in anticipation of before we release it, anyone who's saying that music can't help, that a competition amongst communities won't do anything, don't tell us about the power of music because it can help change some lives and motivate and inspire others. And for the veteran members of this body, it's only really one, Councilmember O'Neal. Council President Clark, you were a staffer. I know about the power of giving young people the ability to tell their authentic stories without a filter. I know it's life-changing because I know what it did for me. When I got the chance to come in and tell my story in that room that I had never been in before, in front of people who were important, and I was scared and I was nervous, but I got to tell my story, it empowered me and it let me know that I had a voice, that the little black girl in the nineteen hundred block of Pennville Street who wasn't connected to anybody or anything, that I had a voice and that it could, it could help empower somebody else. I don't know that because I've read a white paper or because somebody did quantitative or qualitative analysis. I know it because I lived it. Council colleagues, there's no one thing that's going to fix it, but everything that we are doing together, everything, everything, we're going to help to change this culture in Philadelphia. Thank you so very much, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. We will do this together. We will do this with every, every, every breath in our body. This has to get done. It has to get, we have to change it, change the direction of our city with our young people. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is a very, very hard time and not just in our city, in our nation. The, the loss of life among young African American males in particular is just, it, it, it just, there, there's no words for the amount of loss that we each hear about every day. They're getting younger and younger. They're committing crimes at younger and younger ages. And something, we need a disruptor to break this up. We, we need a major disruptor that's going to change the direction and what's happening with our young people. And my heart goes out to this young man that my colleague was just speaking of, you know, to him and to his family. Hill Freeman was in the eighth district for many years. And I'm very familiar with the school with Principal Majewski. And, you know, it's just, th- this is just completely heartbreaking. And so I just wanted to echo my sentiments regarding that terrible loss, which just should, should never have happened. And as well, the violence around women, what happened in Atlanta. You know, we are reaching out. I know that the commissioner has made a comment in terms of making sure there's no copycat here in Philadelphia. And so we, we thank her for that and also for her efforts here in the city around violence, particularly gun violence. And the, just briefly last, I wanted to say that Emma Chappelle, you know, I, I can only smile when I think about Emma Chappelle because I counted her as a mentor to me as well. You know, as someone who, like Councilwoman Green, I started out actually in the business field and as a banker. And she was a role model. She was someone who lifted you up. She was someone who kept people apart. She was someone who really pulled people together for the good of this city and for the good of the African American community. So she'll really be missed. I will really miss her. And I will smile when I think about her for all that she gave to us and gave to our city. And so this is a very, very challenging time. And I just thank my colleagues for all of the work that they're doing. I know that we're all doing our work. We're all out here trying to hit the street to make a difference. I just really want to thank everyone for all of their hard work. And I want to thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. We will figure out a way. Confident with the talent and the commit, and the commitment and the passion that we have in our body. We're going to figure out a way to make a difference. We have to. That concludes our speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. With that, I'd like to recognize Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, at ten AM.
Thank you. We moved in second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, ten AM. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, aye. Motion carries. Thank you all very much and God bless you. Be safe. Thank you. Thank you.